Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. Oh, I didn't say not touch it. I'm gonna, apparently I just won't touch it.
She'll adjust for us.
All right. Are there any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda? I'm sorry?
In the land swap that's being discussed with the city council in Central Park, is that something, there would have to be a public, there would have to be a public vote on that, or, with the land swap? I think there hasn't even been approached about that yet.
If, if there's any land involvement, as far as I know, David, you can correct me, any land involvement, whether it was a sale or a swap, would have to go before the voters.
Okay, thanks.
That's correct.
Yep.
All right. Seeing nothing else, we'll move on. Any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments to the agenda.
All right. Announcements?
So, by your place, there are some announcements. I'll just quickly go over some of those. Again, we've had a great start, not really a total second week, but we are in the second week. The students, again, are easing into their schedule and their routine and taking advantage of the opportunities that we have going on at the schools. A couple of other things, specific schools, Chamberlain is preparing for their annual Harvest Fest to be held on September 23rd. This is an all-school event, involves students, staff, and families in a variety of fun and activities. Orchard Schools gearing up for their first-ever Fun Run, a school-wide event organized by the PTO, where each student will run, walk, or wheel towards their goal in a healthy initiative. This is the only fundraiser that they're planning on doing this year. Rick Marcot Central Schools continuing a hands-on nature program. Parent, guardian, and volunteers who are trained to enter the classroom, hands-on experiences. This has, again, been a highly successful program in the past, and they're excited about that. Total Middle School's sixth-grade students who are taking band today, actually yesterday, was it yesterday? I'm mixing up which day I saw the van here. I talked to the Ellis Music folks who delivered all of the instruments, these are the first-time instruments, to our sixth graders, so there'll be some interesting sounds forming, but we're excited about that. I think she said they, they delivered over 140 instruments, so that was kind of exciting. South Burlington High School's off to a positive beginning, both in clubs and activities, and sports wins over the past weekend, where field hockey, girls' and boys' soccer, football, strong showing across country, as well as some of our other club are off to a good start as well. Our key club, who provided also, they provided some of our welcome banners to some of our students, which show up all over. All schools are relishing the updated buildings that happened over the course of the summer, so thanks to go out to all of our facility and custodial folks. And this is a new one, a new fundraiser. Again, not a lot of information yet, but Healthy Living, it will be partnering with Common Roots and the school district to give, each month, if people mention South Burlington or Common Roots, some of the money proceeds will come back to the nutrition program to help continue further healthy meals. And then, last but not least, is the Steering Committee, I want to make sure is known that it will be on September 26th at 7:00 at City Hall, and board members will make sure you, you get that, another update on that. But that was talked about last week at the city meeting, and, again, that's September 26th, 7:00, City Hall. We are hosting, and Elizabeth will be chairing that meeting. It rotates between city and school. And is that all I have on announcements?
What's the date and time on that again?
Yep, it is the 26th at 7:00, City Hall, Steering Committee meeting. And then, I'm really getting amped up here. To school board members, I know that this was circulating around, but the VSBA regional meetings, there are several meetings that happen throughout the state, starting September 11th and going through October 10th. And again, if you're interested, there's an opportunity, business meeting, there's small group discussions, sharing ideas and feedback, this is an opportunity. Again, I have copies, and I'll, I'll pass those around.
When is the meeting for our region?
Our region is Winuski, and that's September 11th.
September 11th.
Yeah, so now, that's correct. And I know, I think Elizabeth has signed up for that one maybe, yep.
So, Delana, can you have me sign up for that as well? Thanks.
You can have that. I'll get some extra copies for the rest of you. That's all I have for announcements.
Okay. Any other announcements from the board? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, City and School Collaboration.
So, just giving folks a little bit of an update, Elizabeth and I, on an ongoing basis, meet with city, Kevin Dorn, city manager, and Helen, really, the Chair of the City Council. And this is an opportunity for us to discuss, you know, and collaborate on, on issues that are of concern or opportunities. One of the ones that's come up is certainly this conversation around the Rick Marcot boundary line adjustment, and it was put in forms of, I think, a letter of intent, sometimes been referred to as an LOI. And so that was certainly a conversation that came up the last time. The board, the school board, had been pursuing the opportunity to refine that LOI, and we learned at the last meeting that the city council was putting some pause on that. I think specifically mentioned was the Agency of Natural Resources had some concerns specific to kind of the property and the, the ability to grant, get permits. So, basically, the conversation with us was that that has been put on a pause, and they'll let us know when that will, will continue, or when their next thought. And again, specifically, it was a March, whether or not this would make a March, March vote period, and currently, that information was, they did not see that happening. So, I don't know if you had anything else to add to that.
Not on that particular issue, but one of the areas that, at the meeting, you were not able to be at last, David, the board did unanimously pass support of the resolution on regional governance at the airport. So, we did commit to put something in writing with board signatures on that, and I think we need to follow up on that.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Anything from the public? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7, Enrollment Update and Staffing Recommendation.
So, board, I provided you with a packet of information specific to that, and I did not get that out to you that early. I get it, got it to you yesterday, and then there's also a copy by your place. Looks like that. So, let me just kind of quickly walk through this. Pause at any time for questions that, that you have. What you have in front of you is enrollment summary by school by grade, pages 2 and 3, enrollment concerns by school and grade, page 4, a list of options to consider to alleviate the concern, and then an update on the number of FTEs, and that means full-time equivalent staff versus the approved. And then also, I give, have provided the policy G6, which is our, our policy specific to that. So, getting into that, page 2, again, just gives you our current, as of September 1st, enrollments, and also the category before that was what we projected. And as you all know, we added some, a teacher resource at Central School and Orchard this past budget year, and we put one teacher in contingency. So, again, I'm not going to go through the current data, you can certainly look at that. Page 3 is the middle school and the high school. I certainly would note that we're, our enrollments are not decreasing, our enrollments are increasing. And in addition to just our resident population at the elementary, certainly the high school and the middle school are seeing some uptick, although I would say that the high school, primary area to look at is the number of students that are coming to us in the tuition category, which is at 198. We estimated somewhere around that, that 183, we had 191 as a previous conversation as well, we're at 198 currently. Again, just highlighting a few of those areas. Page 4 gets into enrollment concerns, and what I, what I've highlighted, and let me just pause for a second, this is something that obviously I put together for you, but I've also spent considerable amount of time with, with all of the elementary principals, and, again, specifically with Mark and with Holly most recently. The areas of concern that I've highlighted in yellow for you is the kindergarten at Chamberlain, and currently at 42 with two teachers. Holly did make a move as a result of the enrollment push at fifth grade, and again, those numbers increased over the, over the year, and Holly felt, obviously, appropriate to move the, her resource up to that fifth grade. And at Orchard, fourth grade has had the 43, 53 students with the two teachers at, one class at 26 and one class at 27. Both of these grades have seen increases from the previous June 1, or June end year. Some of this information was also provided to the board in the question and answers that came back around some of the, kind of the numbers and, that we've started with and where we've ended. Page 5, I've listed some options. There were other ideas and options that we had on there as well, but these are, again, probably the, the five that I felt were most salient opportunities. So, option 1 was continue to monitor and support the students with the resources currently in place. Option 2 was to add a fourth-grade classroom teacher to Orchard and keep the support person in place for the remainder of the school year to support the two kindergarten classrooms at Chamberlain. Option 3 was to add a fourth-grade classroom to Orchard and add two support staff, one for each of the kindergarten classrooms at Chamberlain for the remainder of the year. Option 4, add a support person to Orchard, fourth grade, and keep the support person in place at Chamberlain for the year. Option 5 was to add a fourth-grade classroom teacher to Orchard, moving that from two classroom teachers to three, and have a dual-certified teacher, special educator, general educator, to kindergarten at Chamberlain, again, making that kind of a two to three. The recommend, recommendation is option 5, which is simply reiterating what I've put ahead. The rationale is, so let me, let me be clear, option 5 was to add a fourth-grade classroom teacher to Orchard and the dual-certified teacher at Chamberlain for the kindergarten. The rationale for this, again, it could go on, but in, in short, the recommendation, recommendation for the additional resources at Orchard and Chamberlain are in part due to the increasing enrollments. Chamberlain has 20 additional students as of September 1st. They're at 247, they're up from 227 at the end of last year. Orchard has 17 additional students as of September 1st and is now at 397. This is a number we've not seen in a long, long time, very close approaching that 400, and they're up from 380. In addition to the increased enrollment, it's further recognized that the numbers in certain grades have required moving some of the resources. As I mentioned earlier, Holly moved a resource from kindergarten up to fifth, which have created some, what I'll say, vulnerable areas in those higher, in those higher classes, given the, the number of teachers, the fewer number of teachers. Orchard currently has two fourth-grade classrooms, one with 26 and one with 27, and by adding the additional classroom teacher, it will certainly bring it down into the recommended number 17, 18, and 18. The Chamberlain currently has two classroom teachers with 21 students. By adding a dual-certified teacher, this, the, again, special educator and general educator, students will be supported in either a co-teaching model or small groups, adding this flexible resource will not, will assist not only with the large classroom numbers, but build the multi-tiered system some support. A dual-certified teacher can be used to help with a large classroom, provide targeted interventions, and co-teach within the classroom. Additionally, using this teacher as a special education resource allows for the district to seek reimbursement for the position. I will add that, you know, I did, I'm not, I have not been able to get out of the building much. I'll be honest with you, since the start of the school year, particularly the opening day of the school year, but I did make myself get out and get over to see Mark and his fourth grade and spend some time in the classroom, and actually with both Tina Brown and Nancy Rogers in kindergarten, and actually sat at circle time this morning and watched them masterfully have conversations and try to, try to keep the numbers and the students very, very cute, but very clear that they have their hands full. Yeah. So, anyway, that's, that's a little bit of my today activity. Page 7 pulls in the FTE numbers, and in summary, looking at the grand total, you see where we, where we currently are versus the full-time equivalent staff, and the grand total based on, on that. I've also provided in the, in the lower narrative, where we currently are at the 486, oh six, the 3.26 FTEs, less than the current budget number. And again, a little bit of a breakdown of those 3.26 FTEs not being filled are within those areas. Some of it's been, some of the moving parts. The last part of that begins to talk about, again, on page 8, some of the positions that have not been able to be filled because of the, the, some of our late, our late budget approval process. It's my hope, actually, you know, that where we've recognized resources, where we're needed, that's appropriate. As we continue through, though, the start of the school year, we're being watchful on where, where we may or may not need to add to those, to that. I'm very conscious about the FTE, and I do not want to go over that, over our allotted FTE, and would like to actually keep it, you know, below what we actually budgeted, if possible. The last page is page 9, which is the, simply the G6 policy, which you've seen. And again, this rolls up district-wide, but we also have looked at it with some sensitivity to individual classrooms. And then last is the questions that I received from board members this past, today, actually, with some responses to some of these very specific questions that came up. A fair amount on the FTEs are on the backside, and again, my staff, you know, worked to provide some clarity to that. So, with that, I'm going to just be quiet and take any questions that the board has, specific to, to where we're at.
Just a quick clarification question. So, on the page 7, I guess, this is probably saying what actually is on the page, but, so, so those are not being filled. You're done with trying to fill those particular positions on that page.
Not necessarily, Martin.
Or not necessar, okay, all right.
What is important, though, is that those positions that are identified are already counted in either, in the both the budgeted and actual.
Right.
They're already counted in there. So, if I don't, if we don't end up, in some cases, like our BCBA's, we've not been able to find one.
And BC, BCBA?
Is a, is a therapist that will provide specific services to students in need. The second part of that is the speech and language. We have been hard, we've been working hard to try to find a person to fill that position that's in the budget and in the actuals, but not yet hired. Again, I think we have a candidate as of today.
But, but those are the ones that are on page 8. I was talking, I guess, the ones on page 7, the 3.26 FTEs, the tech ed, the science, the health business, art at Chamberlain, interpreter, paraeducator.
That's right. So, these may-
Those might not be filled.
Not be filled, that's correct.
But they're not, you're, they're not, definitely not being filled?
There are some that, that won't, obviously, some of this is specific, like the athletic trainer, we won't fill that. That will probably likely contract out for the services that we need to support the athletic activities. This isn't specific to a, an individual who has significantly reduced their time. So, that said, I don't want you to only focus on FTEs, but it's also dollars in there, so there's, there'll be some work down the road on how we move forward. The para-ed, right now, you know, I think will be okay, and we may not be hiring that position.
So, I, I mean, I guess the obvious question from my standpoint, if these were budgeted, we obviously had identified a need, so it, has the need changed, or how, are we, are we getting coverage in a different way?
So, the needs have changed slightly, and the way in which we're providing coverage is also, our efficiencies, I will say, are occurring, and you'll see that these are obviously fragmented FTEs, or proportional FTEs.
I'm still confused, even after the, after the answer to the question. So, if you just count up the positions, the differences in the schools that are missing teachers that were budgeted, or staff that were budgeted, I get to 8.09. So, understand that that's offset by a couple of the places, so Rick Marcot and the district level that actually had, are higher than budgeted in a couple of places. So, this 3.26, to me, still doesn't account for, you know, almost five other positions that were budgeted but don't appear to be, being filled, because the explanation was that the, the ones on the next page actually are already in the budgeted and actuals. So, if I'm looking at this chart, I'm still not understanding what the other five were and, and how we're covering those needs.
Well, I can work to try to do a better job as we, you know, to walk you through the, kind of the balance. I'm not, I'd like to probably do that at the, in a, in a follow-up email with you, to kind of give you the balance summary of where we are, as opposed to try to-
Okay.
-walk you through that.
Can I clarify, Bridget, what you're looking at? You're looking at the difference between budgeted and actual summaries for each of the-
For each of the schools. So, this 3.26 is the net. At Rick Marcot, for example, we're two FTEs higher than we budgeted.
Higher.
And I understand the explanation is that we have some additional interventionists here and there that have come with students that have higher need. So, understand where the, the, if you will, the negative variance is, where we have additional FTEs. But if you just sum up, so for example, the Chamberlain, 1.07, the Orchard, 2.26, the middle school, 3.73, and the high school, .67, that's higher than this 3.26 that we're doing, just by taking the nets across the whole district. So, there, I'm just concerned that there are some needs that are being lost somewhere in here, just because we're netting off the difference.
Well, are you, and are you comparing that, I'm not that you have to do this, but would, if you netted out to page 8?
And I did not net out to page 8, but my, my understanding, based on the note, is that both, those are both included in the budgeted and the actual. So, there, this, my understanding, if that note is correct at the top of page 8, is that that should have no net effect-
On the summary, on 7.
Yeah. So, that if you sum up the variances, just the positive ones and the negative ones-
That's right.
I get to point, or 8.09 is what I got to. And I, like I said, I, maybe there's just some misunderstanding about what was actually included in the actuals. So, maybe the actuals, the, maybe, some, maybe some of these were in the budgeted on page 8 and then not actually in the actuals, as the note says.
So, one, so one follow-up, it sounds like, David, is we need a reconciliation of the-
Differences.
Column positive variances of, that are summarized on page 7.
Mm-hmm. Gotcha.
And I, and I guess a follow-on question to the efficiencies question is, are those sustainable, from your perspective, or are they kind of how we're-
That they not be included, do you mean, sustainable for the future?
Well, more sustainable in terms of coverage of the service that was identified in here. It is, it sounds like you're prepared, based on changing need, that some of those are sustainable, but some of these may be filled as well.
Correct. Fair statement. I think some will be able to be sustained as a notable reduction based on the, but again, I think it's important to know that we're also at the start of the school year, and particularly, when you talk about the high school, I worry to make that early commitment around, like, science, that there may be some sectional changes that might require, again, that .13 to be, to be added. My hope is, we won't, we won't, we won't need it. But, and again, that's just one example that is out there.
And then, just from a, from a board standpoint, relative to policy, we are out of compliance on the kindergarten at Chamberlain right now with 42 students and two teachers, in that the policy calls for, I'm going to refresh my own one here, the policy at the kindergarten level calls for-
No more than 20. So, 16 to 18 is ideal. We also have to be careful, though, in with the policy, at least the way we've been interpreting the policy. The policy has been interpreted as the average across the district. I've always advocated against that myself, but, as a parent, because that's not what it feels like when you're the person in the classroom, but I just wanted to make sure that we were clear that technically we're in the policy, but it's not really meeting the needs of the children.
So, let me just clarify, are we out of compliance with the policy based on the average interpretation?
If you go to your, your page, and again, if currently, you can look at that against your-
I didn't see a summary in here, and I, I should have printed it out. I went ahead and did a quick, a quick one, just to see if technically we were. And technically, we just eke under in these ones where there are the troubles-
In both.
In both. So, yes. So, it's something like 19 and a half across the district for the kindergarten, and then same for, for fourth grade. It's just barely under the 25 that we were talking about in the policy as the, the absolute max, but that still doesn't meet the needs of the students who are in these classrooms necessarily.
Well, and I think, I mean, these are always the tough calls, because I think we're, I think we're one student, on an individual classroom basis, we're one student over in two classrooms at the kindergarten level in Chamberlain, and we're one and two students over the max in fourth grade at Orchard. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
My question around the recommendation specifically was why we're treating them differently. So, with regard to the fourth grade, we're saying hire a new teacher, divide those two classes into three classes. I was a little unclear exactly how this kindergarten teacher would work, how that resource would be shared, what that would look like from a student or a family perspective, and then, and why we chose to do something differently at the kindergarten level versus the fourth grade level.
Yeah, so, good question. And I, that was question 3 on your questions, why are we recommending a new classroom at Orchard but different teaching model at Chamberlain? And so, again, just to be consistent with what I put out, you know, the dual-licensed teacher is not more expensive one, but gives the district some flexibility on how to position, how that position is used, as well as helps to build the response to a variety of needs. Particularly, we have to think about kindergarten a little bit different. This model will work, first of all, we have classroom teachers that had the opportunity to have a conversation with Holly today, I believe that to be true. That's an important component, too, around how we can work, how we work collaboratively in that model, particularly with the development assets of kindergartens. And again, at fourth grade, doesn't mean that we're not into a co-teaching model, but we also have bodies, you know, we have 27 bodies, and the co-teaching model is very different in that particular situation, and it's just, it's just a different dynamic. Again, the Chamberlain School does have an additional space, so there can be some variations around the, how they will construct their, their instruction and their environment. And that may be that they're all together for a period and then doing a variety of, of other things. In the fourth grade model, again, some of the outcomes are, and the expectations in the classroom are different, as well as that number, that 28 and 27 are just physically difficult in putting another consulting teacher. Even if we had that, that model moving, it, it makes it more difficult. And so, those conversations have been had, again, most recently, because we haven't had the recommendation out there to, to, to assume, but I know Mark similarly has had the conversation with his, with his two teachers. And again, this is not easy, because we've got moms and dads and guardians that are now, you know, we're going to have to collaborate and communicate with them around how we, perhaps, in some cases, in the fourth grade, divide or move kids into those, those other situations. There's a pro, process that will likely need to be unfolded if, if the board's in support of that, around how you go about doing that.
And then, how about decisions on, is this a new hire or a redeployment of an existing resource, and what's the timing for that process?
Again, I think that would all be, it would, it would need to be a posted position. We may have individuals that, you know, through our connections with either student teachers or our current employees that are, in some cases, paraeducators but might be certified, there could be a, a nice fit there. But we would follow the same process and protocol, where we would advertise, we would interview. At the same time, we have some information that needs to go out to moms, dads, and guardians about how we're going to be doing it. We're interviewing now, we'll be asking for, I'm kind of making this up, Mark and Holly, but, again, on Mark's- but again, on Mark's side, we're looking for folks that would, would, would want to make that move. We're looking for balanced classrooms and obviously in the end, he'll need to make some decisions if he doesn't get that. I think most importantly on the fourth grade, I think all grades, I mean, we want, we want these grades to be together. We want them to have, you know, connections whether they're going to music or art. And actually, those classes for, for Mark would probably stay together, I think is what we thought, for art, music and physical education. Staying together for lunch, these are opportunities for kids to still stay connected and not feel like they're losing, you know, a good friend, you know, in that regard. So again, there'll be some sensitivity. I'm not wanting to spell all that out, but we've talked a little bit about that.
Can I ask a dumb question? Do we have space?
Space at Orchard is very good. We probably would take over a project room, which, which we have, we do frequently, so.
Project room is
I knew it was that.
Project room is located in, actually they were done in the additions nineteen ninety, I'm drawing a blank on that, ninety-one I think. And so they're at the very end of the, the two hallways and so
Still part of the team.
Yeah, so it'd still be part in the same area. In Holly's school, there is a classroom available. And again, how that would be constructed and set up would, is in part connected to the work that, that Nancy and Tammy and Holly kind of figured that out with the new person.
Mark?
I just wanted to mention about the differences in the models. They are going to look different at each of the grade levels. One thing that hit us was we actually, our fourth grade went down before the end of the school, well, we anticipated, we knew who was leaving. So we went from forty-eight to forty-six and yeah, we had two new students moving in and four moving out. And that stayed consistent until August. And we've, we, I think we had about eight students coming in. And a year ago, when we had three fourth grades, they went to twenty-five, twenty-five and twenty-five, but not until January. So this year, we had this big wave in August, but last year we had a big wave from like Thanksgiving through very early January. And I'm a little nervous we might get that again. We, you know, it's volatile. And then what would happen then? So then we have this co-teaching model, but we have twenty-eight and twenty-nine. And those rooms are small actually. And those kids are starting to get bigger, so.
Well, a lot of our, a lot of our classrooms, you know, that's one thing, I mean, people, you know, some of, some folks in the room may say, well, I went to school, it was, I had twenty-five or, or more. But we also have to look at the square footage and our classrooms are also set up in different ways, you know, I think much more engaging. But there's not as much space and we, you know, at Orchard, you know, we're seven hundred square feet, you know, essentially and you put the bodies, you, thirty feet, thirty square feet per student. You do the quick math on twenty-six, we're over, you know, simple math. And again, that's not even, most importantly, it's not about the square footage to students. It's also about the academic exchange that we're looking to have happen. And again, I, I had the opportunity, it's not like I haven't been, I haven't been in a long time into some of the classrooms, but, you know, from a young boy saying, you know, I really want to be a reader, you know, and just so excited. And then at the same time, others are popping up, sitting down, turning around and, you know, just looking at the mass of the, the students, it's certainly clear to me that there's some added, added, needed support. So again, I thought the teachers did masterfully in my visit, unannounced by the way, but they were, the kids were really cute too.
Can I mention one other thing? The thing I wanted to say was, I don't feel like this, we hope that this is not like blindsided because Holly and I have been pressing David for a couple of months on this. And, and we had to agree, so when we met and finalized, we've been talking about it all, all summer, our team. And so holding off on that contingency was really, you know, we were trying to take away, what did we learn from this? And holding off on that contingency, you know, I thought was, I thought was, well, it could, has potential to really help Orchard and both, both schools. But we were working together collaboratively all summer, but also looking at how we split our resources in elementary grades.
And as I, as I said earlier, in the past, we've made some decisions, even during the summer, on what we had for registrants. But what actually came to be true on the first day of school was much different. And so while it's not great if we're student-centered, which I, you know, I, I want to say we are, I am, but at some point, you know, our resources are critically important and, and to try not to, you know, put them in places where they then might not be needed. Again, I think everyone would say, well, David, the fourth grade didn't, you know, as Mark said, once we got that influx, it didn't, I mean, it seemed to actually hold that number. We kind of, you know, I think a lot of people say, well, why didn't you make that decision early? But I think it's some of that track record of the, the variability, as I said, in that response is, we've, we've had that. And there's some grades that, as Holly has said, you know, are twenty-nine and, and what grade, Holly? Has kind of tracked the same, hasn't changed at all.
My third grade.
Third grade, you know, so there's, there's these anomalies out there too that, for whatever reason. And I think it's a good story for us. We're not a district that's seeing significant downward turning enrollment. In some cases, we're, we're challenged by, you know, where some of the, the growth is happening and that's a really good thing and a testament to a good district, good teachers, and good things happening in our community. So that's my recommendation. Holly?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit to Bridgette's piece and I know Joey and Godat couldn't be here tonight, but another piece that we looked at are the students in need of special education services. And that is a higher percentage at Chamberlain. So by having somebody who has that certification in special education and having them in and doing co-teaching as well as supporting differentiation and interventions, helping out that numbers, it's also going to allow us to utilize the resource of our special educator who's assigned to kindergarten right now in some of the other grades. Like when you look at our first grade, that they have twenty and twenty in a class. So we'll be able to deploy some of those services up to some of the other grade levels, which will, will help. And then, you know, I also think just that trying to be fiscally responsible piece of that it's a reimbursable position if we have somebody who has that dual annulment, that it won't be the, the same cost as a full-time classroom teacher.
Oh, thank you for that. It's probably not the right time to really get into the details of it. I would like us to have another conversation. We had one back when we were talking master planning and visioning and making some kind of final decisions, but as a board, how we can sort of prevent this from happening or help David prevent this from happening? Because I feel like we have been looking at enrollment and we've been getting updates and we've been asking the questions and we've been kind of told, you know, we're watching different areas and trying to work out solutions. But this is the second time in three years that we've kind of ended up with school starting and then having to add resources, which, which adds a little bit of chaos to the, the kids' lives as well as the teachers who have to sort of shuffle with, with moving little bodies around. And so I just, I think at some point, I don't know if it's around the budgeting conversation or, or when the right time is for that discussion, but I'd like us to revisit it a little bit and see if there's something that we can put in place that kind of, that helps us make these decisions in, in a, in a different way.
Fair. I, I know in my, in my responses, Bridgette, some of the questions that were, you know, we, we get surprises right at the start of the school year. And so I, a couple of thoughts and ideas and we can talk more about this in the future, anything connected to budgeting, but, you know, advertising and communication to parents and how important it is for us to get the information so we can make the allocated resources. It can't just be right before school starts. It's going to be kind of in, in our budget building period so that we have better, more solidified numbers. That said, you know, we are a, a community that has some housing opportunities that are transitional for, for, for folks. Either they're moving into us or they're moving around. And I think, you know, trying to be sensitive to, to that population as well creates some of the, the change. But I'm open to work on it. I, in the past, you know, we, I had contingent teachers only. This year, we actually put some additional resources and kind of doing, you know, numbers hold and they did. You know, certainly Orchard, we added a whole, another teacher and at Rick Marquette, I think that was a good move. We put the, another one in contingent, actually hoping we wouldn't need it. But we had some watches on these particular grades and particularly, you know, moving as Holly did, a kindergarten to, to fifth grade, obviously created higher volatility in, in a two-classroom teacher situation. And again, I'm, I want to be careful not to just then put two additional, you know, two additional teachers either because, you know, that's also pressures the budget. So again, I, I think in, in short, I hear you, we'll keep working on it. I hope that our demographer data and our enrollment prediction, projections will really help too.
Yeah, we were not expecting an increase of twenty children, which is a, an entire classroom of students. Of course, they all don't come in one specific grade level. And, and the other piece about that is, yes, we're up twenty children, but really it's, it's thirty-three new children who have moved into Chamberlain, thirteen who have moved out. And then we also have, you know, this new batch of kindergartners that are new to Chamberlain too. So as long as I've been here, this is, this is my seventh year, we have not had that many students coming in over the summer. And I think same at Orchard and also the middle school and the high school. It's not like there's some big new housing development going up in our neighborhood, so. It was hard to predict.
I'd like, if I could just comment, David, I actually thought you did a really nice presentation here. And I think maybe we see the enrollment data a little bit more frequently and so our expectations are managed. But, you know, I'm quite comfortable, given the volatility that we've experienced and sort of holding off to make the decisions and doing as best, you know, an optimal deployment of the resources based on the most recently available information. You know, maybe we can do a better job than Mrs. Us as a board to communicating that expectation to the general public. But I endorse the way that you approached this and the decisions you made.
Mm-hmm. I, listen, I mean, I'm sensitive to, number one, which I should be, to kid, children. And again, I'm, I want to start, as I said, I am not in every classroom, but, and then the teachers that support them and to moms and dads and guardians. And I know, you know, we want moms and dads and guardians to be really connected and caring about their kids. And I think, you know, that's also a hard thing when you're trying to walk through this in that way.
Candidly, we were also a source of volatility for you a couple of years ago. You know, we started Chamberlain, moved for a month, came back, so making it difficult on Holly and the kindergarten for a couple of, couple of months there.
I have a quick question for Mr. T. Are these new kids in the fourth grade, don't get into specific identifying details, but did they, did their families either close on houses and sign leases starting in August or, or is it something that sort of gradually happened over the summer and they finally got around to saying, let's sign up for school?
One, at the very end of July was a transfer from another one of our schools and then the others were putting leases down and, or, or mortgages.
Right.
So we don't, we, we really, we have a really good system for how we seriously would take. Some people want to just tour the buildings
Mm-hmm.
and then work with the realtor. And so we want to welcome everybody. You know, we want this school to be very vibrant, but, our district. But we, we really are very, we're on it as far as what the paperwork is bringing to us.
Because it just did occur to me that if we were to be enterprising enough to track the property transfers coming from City Hall, we might be able to predict this a little bit more, maybe a month, a little, a little more in advance. So if we were seeing, you know, families buying houses
Could I, could I mention? I, I know you're, I know we're going through this like, how could we, and we could always improve on that.
Yeah.
But if you remember the budget drafts one through like eighty-five or something like that, there was an additional teacher at Orchard. And the contingency, and of course, those changes had to be made to, to get to a successful school year. So I'm not, but I just want you to remember that we did have that and the contingency. So, so that plan wasn't in place and it, and it had enough flexibility to, to help out Chamberlain's large kindergarten class now. So in the end, when we knew that that budget was going to go to, whatever that last one was, we had to make hard decisions and, and the fourth grade was, was the least, least painful, that's the best way I could say that, for it. So we did have a system in place for that.
Thank you.
Do you need action on this?
I do.
And just before we take action, I'd also acknowledge that the board has received communication from concerned parents and guardians over the course of the past few weeks. And we appreciate the feedback and appreciate the patience that everyone's had allowing our administrators to work through some creative solutions and allowing the superintendent to pull together the entire district data for the board to consider and, again, to, you know, let, make sure we're serving our student population in the best way possible. So do we have a motion to, based on the administrator's recommendation to add a fourth grade classroom teacher to Orchard and a dual certified teacher to kindergarten at Chamberlain?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to agenda item eight, master planning and visioning.
So I'm not going to repeat everything but what I said earlier, board, around the work with the city on the, the LOI and the land swap piece is certainly also connected to the master planning and visioning. Currently, we have two board members, Steve and Bridgette, who are part of the master planning and vision, visioning subcommittee. Although Martin has done a fair amount of work, actually in the past and currently on the sound related issues connected to the airport, Burlington International Airport. And so the quick update on master planning and visioning is obviously all of this has importance to the, to the plan, to the future. What was outlined by the board and, and myself around the work ahead was to really look at all of our schools, the viability as well as student outcomes connected to our ends and any potential area of discourse that might be concerning. So certainly, as I said earlier, the land swap, as I said, is currently on hold from the city. Again, this is a slight boundary line adjustment, to be clear. It's at point seven of an acre. It's right at the very entrance of the driveway and it would allow for a land swap. And the land swap was also specific to having an opportunity for the district to also have access to the current city center when the city moved into their new location. So that currently is one area that is, is a watch under master planning and visioning. The airport noise issue currently is an area that we're concerned about or, or I don't know concerned, but watchful about. We have submitted information to the Burlington International Airport about the data. We'd like to receive the data. They have made us, made available the contour information specific to the DNL contours, which is, which is the day-night noise level contours. And we'd like to get all of the data that gives us kind of the incidental specific data. And so we've requested that. The other part is we've requested in a separate letter to the Burlington International Airport Management is about the soundproofing opportunity. Under the EIS that was submitted, we're, we're understanding that we can apply for the soundproofing. And so we've also asked for that to begin. So what I'm wanting to have is a conversation here around master planning is that we need to pull a meeting together. We'll likely need to warn it because I think it's, would be important, obviously Steve and Bridgette, but to also bring Martin into the conversation so that there's, can be some transfer around the sound information and the work that we've done to date. In addition, we also have the demographic data. So last time we did master planning and visioning, we had McGibben and Associates do the demographic study. They've done a preliminary report, but the final report will be done after the October one collection of number of students. And we'll see then what that means to us. I think we're all kind of a little bit anxious to see, you know, what kind of predictions and, and be able to, to ask some more questions. And then the last part really is looking at, you know, our outcomes specific to our schools and, and specific to our ends outcomes. So master planning and visioning, so again, the call right now is that we'll ask for a meeting sometime and I know some of you had some ideas on meetings. John Stewart has done a piece of this for me and I'm going to have him included in this next meeting to pull us all together. And so you, he'll send out a meeting request sometime tomorrow if that is, if that works for everybody.
Any questions or comments, Monica?
I do have a question on the demographer. Is the city going to, with the city adding as well so that we understand like what new developments are coming up? The Ryan development and more, so we'll be looking specifically at something. specifically at something.
That question was asked, and again, I don't have the actual data in front of me, but new developments, you know, there's a whole series of things that he's, he's looked at. Again, I don't know if it's he, who, whatever, they've looked at.
They're actually looking at New England.
That's right.
That's specific.
Right, and it's, and again, we, we also asked them additional questions. I think the information that we got back before, at least some board members that are, that were here back when we did that, there was also some questions that came up that, you know, it didn't seem like it took this into account, and so we pushed back some of those questions, and there's been some further exploration of that. So we're hopeful that it will take into account everything that we know and is going on or plan to go on in the city, is our hope.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments, we'll move on to Agenda Item Nine, Update on Negotiations. I know there are some questions that, responses have been posted on the district website, and I thought we might just take a minute and kind of give some high-level overview of some of the questions that have come up in terms of clarifying information, in terms of the board's action that was taken last week. Martin, do you want to cover the first one?
I was going to refer to Bridgette.
Oh, Bridgette, sorry, go ahead.
So one of the questions that we keep getting is, is the school board radically changing the salary structure of a 50-year agreement? We posted a rather long answer to this question, a written answer, on our Facebook page. Are they up on the website yet, David? Or were they?
Yes.
They're up on the website as well. So I won't go into every line by line. The short answer is, is we are not radically suggesting that we change the structure of this agreement that we've had with the SBA for, for decades. The current salary structure is six columns, and in some of those columns, there's many as 18 steps. We are not going away from a step and column movement system. The imposed salary terms for FY18 simply change how the money that the board is putting forward for raises is distributed across that grid. In order to have more flexibility to do that, the imposed terms do require that teachers hold on step, so they don't receive step movement for one year. This is not an unprecedented move. This has happened twice, even in recent memory, we didn't go back too far, but in 2008 and 2014, it was actually even at the request of the SBA that we held teachers on step for one year only. Nowhere in our discussions did we recommend that the step system ever cease or that steps might not be a factor in the future, but we, we asked that that happened this year so that we could address some of the concerns that have been concerns of the board and certain parts of the, of the teaching staff for several negotiation cycles. So, secondly, the imposed terms put dollar amounts on each cell in the grid rather than using a multiplier system. So I won't go into the details of how the multiplier system works, but basically, there's a base salary for very entry-level teacher with a BA degree only in their first year of teaching, and then there's a whole grid, in each cell, there's a multiplier of that base salary. So, for example, BA plus 15, so a teacher with a BA plus 15 credit hours and five years of teaching experience would make 1.24 times the base. So instead of doing that this year, we impose terms in which we gave dollar amount raises. Everyone in the BA column receives a $2,000 raise for FY18. Teachers in the masters columns in steps one through 17 receive $1,700 raises, and the teachers at the very top, the masters plus 30, in step 18, would receive $1,500 raises. And I should mention that that very top, they would not have received step this year, and in fact, the imposed terms actually give them a higher raise than what was recommended by the fact finder, the neutral fact finder that we met with in June. So, again, I won't go into the details, there are sort of more details under each of these headlines, but we get asked the question, why did the board decide to impose these changes? One was to address the growing pay gap between junior and senior teachers, and we completely respect and admire our senior teachers and the experience that they bring, but the pay gap between our more senior teachers and our junior teachers continues to grow, and we're asking them to do essentially the same job. And so there is a concern there. There are more details about that in what we've posted online. We're hoping that doing things this way will allow us to compete for junior teachers more effectively. We keep getting told by the community and by others, well, we're not having trouble attracting teachers. Where we have had challenges is attracting more junior teachers. And so often, when we see a new request from David to add someone, it's often at a higher level than was budgeted because that was the teacher that we could find that was willing to take the position. So we're hoping to compete for those more junior teachers more effectively. We want to compensate our junior teachers fairly. Junior teachers pay a much higher percentage of their salaries toward healthcare costs and pension fees and other fees, and we were hoping to alleviate some of that for them by giving them higher raises this year. And we wanted to continue to compensate our senior teachers fairly. Our senior teachers are the most highly compensated teachers in the state. They will remain so. And in our, our highest column, we are still 6% above the Chittenden County average, not just the average for the state, but the Chittenden County average, and Chittenden County pays higher than anywhere else in the state. We've, again, been asked the questions over and over, why we decided to make these changes now? In particular, it's been framed as, you know, we've had such traumatic year as a community, why is the board forcing their hand now? Why, this looks like opportunism, why is the board doing this? These are not new conversations. These are discussions that have come up negotiating cycle after negotiating cycle, and we've been struggling because we keep trying to come up with creative solutions to address some of these concerns that the district has. We haven't seen any flexibility or any creative ideas coming from the SBA, and we feel like as a board, we're not being responsible in our position if we don't actually try to address some of these concerns that come up year after year in negotiations. So we respect that the community's had a tough year, the teachers have had a tough year, we as a board have had a tough year, David has had a tough year, and, and we are not, we are not trying to use that as some kind of opportunity, but we also feel like we need to do the job that, that we're being asked to do. So I'll turn it over. Are you doing number two, Martin, or are you, yeah, I'll turn it over to Martin for Bridgette.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to cover just the healthcare. One of the questions that, that has come up is in the context of, if the teachers were to continue to pay a dollar cost toward premiums and out-of-pocket versus a percentage, could they be on the hook for a larger amount of the cost, of, of cost if healthcare costs continue to rise? And I guess I'd first say, healthcare costs are likely to continue to rise. You know, the, within the VHI organization, I think in the last seven years, the cost of premiums have gone up 36% in seven years. The district has borne the lion's share of the premium share. Seven years ago, I think it was probably at about, let me think, maybe 90% or so? But basically, in a, in a, about a seven-year period, it's gone from about 90 to 83%, or it might have been a little bit less than that. So I think it's a foregone conclusion, healthcare's likely to increase. The, the goal of the district as an employer is to really to continue to offer, you know, high quality, great quality and cost-effective healthcare plans to district employees and their eligible dependents. The, the challenge with healthcare, aside from the fact that costs are increasing, is that the governor has established a commission to, based on Act 85, that is going to make a recommendation, which is targeted mid-November of this year, around the potential for a statewide healthcare benefit for all educators who currently participate with the benefit, largely through VHI organization right now. What the imposed terms of employment did is really hold the employee spending on healthcare constant in dollar terms, and originally, that was for a two-year period, and that was a way of addressing concerns about the new plans and any cost increases associated with that. The imposed terms are for a one-year period, so basically contributions to premium and out-of-pocket costs, whether they're in the form of copays or, or out-of-pocket on the new plans, the four new plans, would be held constant, and the balance of those expenses would be absorbed by the district. Again, the commission's anticipating making that recommendation mid-November, and at this point, we feel like that's a very generous, a very competitive proposal as it relates to healthcare, and it also gives employees the opportunity, probably one of the biggest issues around timing, is the enrollment and education needs to be happening within the next probably two to three weeks. Is that early October? No, later than. So we really want employees to be fully informed about not only the four plans that are being offered, but what the cost-sharing arrangement is between the district as employer and the teacher, so they can make decisions around both an HRA and an HSA arrangement, as well as what plan option they're interested in at this point. So I'll leave it at that on healthcare, but that's, that's where, that's in response to the question about being on the hook for a larger amount of cost.
So I'll just cover one of the other questions or, that we get frequently is, why can't we just go back to the table and just keep on talking? And I'll start by way of background. We started trying to have these conversations on the board's side by reaching out to the association in May of 2016, understanding that we were going to have a very difficult long negotiation because of health insurance changes, and we were going to have to talk those through. Unfortunately, the, the association would not sit down with us until November to start the discussions, but nevertheless, we were able to meet 12 times over 10 months, including the mediation session that lasted 10 hours on the 21st of August. And, and, and we really did not see significant movement towards a reasonable compromise, particularly given the restrictions that the school board was facing in this current budget year. We had to cut our budget twice. It was a third time that the budget was approved. And we have this Act 85, which is going to be reducing the amount of money we are going to be getting from the education fund by over $300,000. So we were fairly restricted as far as what we could do, and the association, after these many months, was not coming anywhere close to what was something that we could actually agree with. I, I do encourage the association to, to explain at some point what position they had at the mediation after the board had made very clear that we were providing a, a final offer and could not move any further. And I think it's illuminating to understand what in fact the association had at the table, which was a big reason why we felt that we had to impose the, the terms, which again, I would say are fairly favorable, given the restrictions we had. But anyway, there's some other additional reasons why we can't go back to the table, don't want to go back to the table on the issue of the imposed terms. We want negotiations to either end in a contract or have terms before the school year starts. I think we've been trying to, you know, make that signal very clear for, since we were trying to start this negotiation almost 15 months ago. We need to particularly this year have the terms in place prior to the school starting. One reason that Elizabeth already mentioned is very soon, the teachers are going to have to make choices as far as what health insurance plan they are going to have.